Welcome.
This is a public meeting, but not a public hearing, therefore while the meeting is open to the public, we do not take public conference questions during the committee meeting. Public conference questions are received at the regular city council meetings held at 7:00 PM in the city council chambers on the second and fourth meeting of each month, virtually, or virtually. The first item on today's agenda is the approval of the minutes for the community development transportation committee meeting for August 26th, 2020. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Judy. Is there a second?
I am.
And by Councilor Tizer. All favor, please raise your hands. And it is unanimous. Thank you. Do we have Councilor Spada? No? Okay. He's, he's in good way. Jason, can you help me in here for a second and get this screen up? Next item on today's agenda, we're going to do public safety police first. Item number 13 on your agenda, consideration of a resolution to accept the federal fiscal year 2020 justice assistance grant in the amount of $10,155 with budget approval of budget amendment number BA 22132101-10-13-2020 in the amount of $13,153. Chief Donald.
Good morning, Mayor and City Council. This item is a grant from the 2020 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant. We frequently refer to this as a JAG grant from the US Department of Justice Bureau of Justice Assistance. The grant is in the amount of $10,155, which would partially fund the purchase of a live scan fingerprint machine for the police department. The, um, this machine allows fingerprints to be sent electronically to state, federal, county, and city agencies. The total cost of this equipment is $13,153, $10,155 coming from this grant, and the balance of $2998 coming from the 2020 operating funds of the police department.
Thanks, Chief. Floor is open for any questions.
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Councilor Tizer.
Second.
Say my Councilor Willsey, any further discussion or questions? All favor, please raise your hands. And it is unanimous. Thank you. Thanks, Chief. Moving on to community development. Item number two on the agenda, consideration of a text amendment. The Unified Development Code is section 2.2, 2.0, residential parking location. Ms. Dible.
Yes, good morning, everyone. Let me share my screen here to show you what we're talking about. Okay, so this is a text amendment where we're looking to change because we had something like this in our old code and for some reason, um, it didn't get moved through. So what we're looking to do is just to remove how it states here. It says parking the front setback only is allowed on hard surface driveway. So we're having an issue related to people parking on the grass. So if we remove parking in the front setback as shown here, it would basically indicate for single family homes, townhomes, um, and attached houses that all parking has to be on the hard surface driveway. So that's what we're looking to change with this text amendment, um, to remove in the front setback. So any questions related to this?
Councilor Tizer.
Yeah, Ms. Dible, um, I, uh, I understand the concept here. So, um, um, what I, what I'm struggling a little bit with is, um, there are some situations and I want to make sure that we have the ability to do that where, um, for example, my neighbor across the street from me is, uh, in her mid 90s. She has a vehicle. She's lived in the home for probably over 70 years. The home has no driveway. She's always parked on the side of the home. Uh, will there be a way for her to have some sort of, um, uh, permit or variance to do such?
Well, technically, we could look into that while we're moving through and moving forward. Yes, we can check into that.
Thank you.
Any further questions or comments? Mayor?
I've got a question, please, because Councilor Tizer raised a good point, which is someone that has never had a driveway and have parked in their, um, front yards or side yards. Um, in my neighborhood, we have a number of houses that for 40 years that I've been in the neighborhood have been parking on the front lawn. So I just want to make sure that everything isn't grandfathered in because we do have different situations here. Um, this is, in my neighborhood, is now a 90-year-old woman, um, that has lived there for, you know, 70 years. So I think we need to be careful on what we grandfather in. And I certainly don't want to, uh, punish a 90-year-old woman. Um, but then at the same time, I don't want to open the door, uh, for a loophole for others to drive through. Nope.
Okay, um, we'll take a look at all this while we're moving it through the process and check on that and, um, work with our code enforcement groups since some of these issues have been brought forward based on that. So we'll take a look at that while we take it through the process.
Thanks, Jackie. So it's a pleasure to the council. Want to bring us back to the next committee meeting?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Judy. Is there a second? Say my Councilor Willsey, any further questions or discussion? All favor, please raise your hands. It is unanimous. Thank you. Moving on to item number three, consideration of a text amendment to Unified Development Code is section 9.4.2, Parks and Open Space, letter C, Community Recreation, Ms. Dible.
So, hold on a second. So this item is to add in, in the definition under that section, to say a private or public recreation facility, um, for use solely by residents, guests of a particular development or by the community within a public recreation facility. So this allows our, um, actually our parks, buildings, and everything else. Um, because we don't actually say public recreation facility anywhere in the code. So we were just trying to clean that up and not just have it as a private, but we also wanted to address the public as well for any of our public buildings that we have in the parks. Do you have any questions?
Councilor Hall.
Thank you. Um, thank you, Jackie. Could you, um, just explain to me a little bit further or give me a practical example of how this would make a difference?
Well, technically, right now, we have nothing in our code that talks about the public recreational buildings that we have. So even though we do it, um, this would make it clear that if there's an addition that needs to be made or anything else that needs to be done in our park buildings anywhere in the city, that it's in the code and it's allowed. Um, because right now, we just, we just kind of go out and do additions or any type of new buildings that we might have, but we don't have actually anything written down. So this helps define it. And that's why we're putting it in.
Councilor Willsey.
Yes, um, thank you, Gary. A just quick question that I would have is just an example of how it might be used in the code. And then I wonder if they should be defined separately, um, you know, a public.
Just do a different paragraph and do it as, do one as private and one as public.
Okay, yeah, because I can see that, um, you know, whatever you might be talking about might be different for, for the two types of. So it might have to be separated upfront.
We can do that. We can rewrite it and move it forward once you, um, if you choose to initiate it. So I can bring it to initiation if you choose to do so with, um, it changed up so that we're, go through the process that way.
Thank you.
Any further questions or comments? What's the pleasure of the council?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Judy. Is there a second? Say my Councilor Willsey.
Yes.
Any further questions or discussion? All favor, please raise your hands. And it is Councilor Plermo. Are you not voting?
I'm in abstain.
One abstained and, uh, five approvals. Thank you. Moving on to item number four, consideration to approve urban redevelopment plan and submission of opportunities on application. Ms. Dible.
This will be handled by Alice, so give me a second to share the screen. Oh, sorry, this is opportunity zone. Give us a minute. Let me stop share. Kyle will be sharing the screen.
Good morning, council. Uh, as many of you may know, the city's opportunity zone, which was approved in 2010, expires December 31st, uh, 2020. There are no extensions. The only way that the city can be considered for opportunities on or utilized opportunities on is for news opportunities on to be designated. Uh, uh, as you know, the opportunity zone is a, a job creation incentive that is, uh, uh, provided by the state for new jobs that are created. For you get a tax credit of 3,500 per net new job, uh, for five years. It's been a very attractive program to a lot of businesses, both existing and new. The city has been successful in attracting new businesses such as the GM IT Innovation Center, McKesson, Yardi, Nolan Transportation Group, and a few others. Of those few that were just mentioned, they've created approximately 200 and, no, I'm sorry, 2,000 and 500 new, new job. The bad news is that, as I said, there's no extension, so you have to apply for a new opportunity zone. And one of the criteria for a new opportunity zone is the urban redevelopment plan. And the urban redevelopment plan, along with the opportunity zone application, has to basically be fashioned and tool in a manner in which the, uh, Department of Community Affairs will accept and hopefully will designate a few opportunities on. It was back, I believe, in February that I came before you and you approved Roswell Inc. being the project manager for facilitating this, uh, new plan and, uh, the, and working with the city on the opportunity zone application. Uh, today, if, uh, we have the consultant, uh, RKG, Kyle Talente, I believe Warren Campbell is also, uh, on the Zoom, uh, and also Kimberly Allred from, uh, Roswell Inc. But turn it over now to Kyle to give you a presentation on the steps that we've gone through to come up with, uh, the plan and the proposed opportunities on, uh, boundaries. And I do want to say that although I think our boundaries that we are proposing are very aggressive and, and that they're very similar to what we currently have, but DCA will make the final decision as to if they approve an opportunity zone and the size of the opportunity zone. So we turn that over to Kyle right now.
Thank you, Alice. Can, can you hear me? Just to make sure that I am mic checked here. Okay, great. Thank you. So.
Can you make it full screen?
Uh, I believe I did. Uh, let me try this again. Hang on. Um, screen share. Screen number three. Right. Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay, my apologies. Um, so as Alice mentioned, your, uh, current urban redevelopment plan was completed 10 years ago. It established what's called the urban redevelopment area, which is a boundary that defines where the, the plan is trying to address. Was also the foundations for the city opportunity zone. As of right now, your current urban redevelopment area and your opportunity zone boundaries don't, uh, align. Uh, frankly, the urban redevelopment area is quite large and a little bit too large for what an urban redevelopment plan is meant to do. Um, the opportunity zone boundary was updated in 2013. And at that, at that time, the city added some parcels that met the state's definition. And we're going to talk a little bit about that because frankly, I think the plan creates a little bit of confusion because of the terminology that the Department of Community Affairs requires. But we'll talk about that in a moment. Um, as Alice mentioned, uh, the plan has to be updated every 10 years with a new application. Um, and the intent, you know, what we did here was to take a look at the city as it relates to the definitions that the community affairs has, has established, looked at the successes that you've had with your previous opportunity zone and urban redevelopment plan, and then reconfigure the boundaries based on how the market and how your, uh, successes have changed the need to have that boundary. Uh, we're not going to. Let's see. But too far. Okay. So, um, as I mentioned, um, just a moment ago, it's very important to understand that the, the urban redevelopment plan uses a set of very specific terminology. These, these are the terms that are required and defined by the Georgia Department of Community Affairs. Uh, they weren't terms that we used or that the city of Roswell used. They're not meant to be qualitative in terms of trying to, uh, assign a subjective, uh, uh, connotation to the city of Roswell. Rather, it is what, um, the state defines as these terms. And so you can see here, and I just included a couple of them, for your understanding, areas displaying pervasive poverty, for example, are block groups within the city that have 15% poverty or higher. Um, they also count adjacent block groups, even if they don't have 15% of, of, uh, households living in poverty. Uh, underdevelopment is lower than average development activities, business license fees, building permits, development fees, uh, or higher than average vacancy rates. Um, general distress, higher than average unemployment, incidence of higher crime or code enforcement, uh, higher than average abandoned, deteriorated, dilapidated structures, substantial population decline. And then blight, there's a couple of areas within the state's, uh, um, general code that define what that is. Uh, the term slum area, redevelopment area. Uh, these are all very, um, sensational terms, if you will, when, when used in a, in a general conversation. And, and we recognize and understand that. However, for the, for, for, for what it's worth, this is the hand that we're dealt, if you will, uh, and the terms that we have to use. And you can see here the, the definitions. Now, I will say, you see here through here, a lot of use of the term average, average unemployment, average development activities, average vacancy rates. That is average compared to the city of Roswell. And that's also very important because you're going to see in just a little bit, a slide that shows, um, identifies, uh, block groups that have higher than average unemployment, for example. Well, the, the most recent unemployment numbers provided by the US Census in 2018 showed Roswell has an average unemployment rate of 2.6%. And so anything that is above that technically qualifies under that higher than average unemployment. And so it's a relative term, and I can understand why this can cause some confusion, but I want to make sure that we're all understanding, you know, where we are. For this particular analysis, we focused in on those that were most relevant to what we learned and understood when we did our analysis for the city of Roswell. And so we identified, for example, areas displaying pervasive poverty because there are a handful of block groups in the city of Roswell where more than 15% of the residents earn or are, are below the poverty line. Uh, general distress, higher than average unemployment, and higher incidence of crime or code enforcement. And then blight, and then you can see here the terms that we used that were relevant to the city of Roswell. So a blighted area has 10% poverty and, and an unemployment rate 10% above the average. So 10% above 2.6 is about 2.9. Okay, so if it has 10% poverty and 2.9 unemployment, that's considered a blighted area. Uh, once again, it's a relative term. It's not necessarily meant to be, uh, defining specifically, but, uh, it is what it is. There are also some what, what the state defines as deteriorating, deteriorating areas, which is the presence of a substantial number of structures that are 40 years old or older. And, and frankly, a substantial amount of the city's commercial buildings were built that long ago. And the city of Roswell is much older than 40 years, and much of your commercial districts had, were constructed prior to 1980. And then blighted buildings, um, buildings with substantial maintenance needs and/or high vacancy. And once again, this is a relative term to the average amount of vacancy within the city. So the first map you're looking here, to give you just a real run-through of the analysis. And you could see, um, I don't know if you can see my pointer, but, um, uh, there, there we go. So this is Georgia 400. This blue line that kind of runs here, it's Holcomb Bridge Road turns into Crossville Road. This is Highway 9, just so you can get a relative sense of where you are on the map. But you can see the, the block groups in red are those that have, um, poverty levels at or, uh, or above 15%. And so they automatically qualify. The ones in yellow are ones that have a poverty rate, um, between 10 and 15%. And they don't qualify directly unless they also have the unemployment rate as 10% higher. Uh, these are the, um, block groups within the city that have higher than average unemployment rate. And as you would expect, you have about half of them there. So, you know, half of them above average, half of them below average, that, that leads you to your average. But so, um, when we bring them together, you can start to see the block groups that, um, qualify for the state's definition to be included within the, um, the urban redevelopment area and as a result, your opportunity zone. Uh, so this map kind of brings it all together, uh, to show those block groups that are qualified, it's, which is a state term, qualified block groups are the ones in orange. And then the adjacent block groups are the ones in yellow, which also technically qualify because of their proximity. Now, looking at this map, you say, Kyle, that's almost the entirety of the city. My response is, yes, it is. And so that, that doesn't make a whole lot of sense in terms of trying to find an urban redevelopment areas, the entire city, given the vast majority of the city is zoned for, um, um, single-family residential. And so we had to go from this and then pare down to areas that we thought were the most appropriate to try and implement an opportunity zone, which is effectively a state program to, to provide tax credits for job creation. So obviously, the initial step was to focus in on the commercial areas of the city and ignore those areas that are not, um, appropriately zoned. Um, one of the other, uh, things we looked at was code enforcement. Um, as you heard, um, you say earlier, uh, areas that have higher than average code enforcement also can apply. What you're looking at in red are all the different code enforcement infractions that were reported to the city of Roswell between 2017 and 2019. Um, you can see, obviously, uh, if I go back to my pointer, um, you do have concentrations along Holcomb Bridge Road and Highway 9. And, and that's important for you to understand, uh, from a standpoint of when we start looking at specific parcels to include into the, the study area. I will say, in our proposed opportunity zone area that you'll see in just a moment, it's 26.5% of the incidents, but only 16.1% of the parcels. And so you see how that plays into that definition of higher than average incidence of code enforcement. Um, the next criteria you looked at is what they're calling deteriorating areas, which areas that have high concentrations of buildings that are over 40 years old. Um, it doesn't say anything about the condition of the building, just the age of the building. And so you can see here, we have identified commercial properties within the city that have a year-built date, um, prior or at or prior to 1980. And you can start to see how this is laying down in terms of trying to bring all these pieces together. Um, we also looked at deteriorating areas and added on those what are considered dilapidated buildings or properties that have a higher than average vacancy rate, but aren't necessarily over 40 years old. And you can see here in the dark blue, just, there's just a handful of additional properties that met that additional criteria. And so we took all of that information and used the definitions that were allowed to define urban redevelopment area opportunity zone and then came up with a proposed, um, um, realignment of your urban redevelopment area slash opportunity zone boundary. And the biggest, the, the existing, uh, opportunity zone boundary is the blue with the dark blue boundary. The proposed boundary is the red. And so what you can see here is there are certain areas of the city where investment have occurred that no longer fit into those definitions that we are recommending be removed from your existing opportunity zone. And there are areas, particularly the northern part of, um, Highway 9, and then some of the commercial centers that are in east of Roswell along Holcomb Bridge Road that are, that would benefit from being part of your opportunity zone, urban redevelopment area, getting access, um, to those incentives. The new boundary reflects those qualified block groups and the adjacent block groups we talked about. Um, the, the boundary is a contraction from the existing opportunity zones where areas of the market has changed. Um, successes at projects like Roswell Summit. Now, I was kind of talking to you about some of the, the businesses that have been attracted to Roswell as a result of your opportunity zone, um, uh, successes. Made us reconsider and think about where those boundaries should be. And we expanded, um, to capture some of those underperforming commercial assets that are proposing, are posing long-term investment, uh, challenges. I don't need to tell you all, for example, about when Target left, uh, on the east side of the city, the challenges that the, the property owners having in terms of trying to attract a new tenant there. And so that, in our estimation, and hopefully the state agrees when this is submitted. in our estimation, and hopefully the state agrees when this is submitted to them, is the reason why it should be included. So there is another tool that the city can use to try and attract a user into those spaces. So I don't want to belabor this any longer than I have. I apologize for the length of time I'm taking, but we, in the Urban Redevelopment Plan per se, when you read through it, there are specific efforts to connect the strategy of the Urban Redevelopment Plan with your existing comprehensive plan, for example, and with other efforts that have gone on in the city. And so you can see here, we brought in some of the visions for these, these kind of larger areas, for example, the Holcomb Bridge four hundred intersection, the Alfreda Highway nine north of Mansell Road, which is a new addition, Midtown Roswell, which continues to be part of it, the Holcomb Bridge corridor spanning from Crossville Road all the way down to four hundred, and then the added East Roswell Shopping Centers into the, into the boundary. And so once again, this is not about trying to redefine what the vision for these areas are. It's to have the plan reinforced with the vision that has already been established for these areas and then bring a new tool to the table, some areas, and maintain a tool for others that haven't been as successful to help the city's economic development efforts and attracting jobs. That's it. That's all I got.
Alice, do you want to add anything else to that? You want to open the floor for questions?
Before you do that, the only thing I want to add is that we'll have the full Urban Redevelopment Plan available for you to look at at the end of the week. And as I tried to move to, and Kyle has mentioned, there's going to be some terms and even some photographs that are going to be a little bitter for some, but it is basically, as he said, the hand that we're dealt with and we have to paint a picture in order to qualify and be successful in getting the opportunity zone approved. We are on a tight deadline. If the committee agrees to move this forward, the public hearing will be October the thirteenth. And hopefully approval of the resolution to approve the Urban Redevelopment Plan and to submit the application to to the Oz application to DCA. We've been told by DCA that they will probably give them adequate enough time to consider a new opportunity zone before the end of the year. And so we'll open up for questions, I guess.
Doors open.
Kyle, thank you. Great presentation and Ms. Wakefield as well. So I have, I think I have two questions. One is, so I definitely think there's a lot of importance in value. Actually, I just want to mention in moving this forward, this is a, this is a a big state program. I want to make sure Roswell is included in it. So I definitely will support moving something forward today to the October thirteenth hearing. And so with that, my, my questions are, number one, so the opportunity zone doesn't have to be fully connected. So, because I love the idea. I think it's very important and valuable to include those, those red blocks on, within East Roswell. They, just by the fact that it's Holcomb Bridge Road connecting it, it doesn't have to have red the whole way through.
So the official boundary will actually go on either side of the roadway. So you'll have a nice strip of red line that follows Holcomb Bridge Road, but that technically meets the state definition of a boundary, as long as you use the width of the road. So it's not going to capture all those parcels on either side until it gets to the ones that we want to include.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you. And so that was one. Yeah, I just want to make sure it's that we're doing it right and setting it up right. Also, Ms. Wakefield's had a comment, and I think Kyle, you did as well, about just some could argue that we're going for an aggressively large zone, if I heard correctly. And if that's the case, I just want to be clear, does that, does that create any risk of us not getting approved? Because the last thing I'd want is to not, to not get anything because we asked for too large of a zone.
No, I mean, ultimately, they're going to decide. And it's not that they don't, they'll just say, no, it's too big, we're not going to consider. They're going to come out, they're going to do their own visual kind of looks and see. They're going to talk to the city and to Roswell Inc. And they're, they will whittle it down. I just say that because we've been told that the commissioner is not as in line with the previous commissioner. The bigger the better. He wants to be more contained and more focused.
And from my perspective is, is that, you know, these are all the properties that qualify by their definition. And so put forward your full, your full array of properties that meet their standard and then let them say, well, yes, but technically maybe this one shouldn't be in there. So we wanted to make sure that we were given the opportunity to include as many parcels as meet their terminology.
Thank you.
Counselor Willsey.
Yes, thank you. And thank you, Kyle and Alice, and your teams for the work that you've done here. I think look forward to seeing the complete report. I think it's very insightful and a lot of opportunities. And I think if we look back at some of the opportunities and businesses that have been brought through the previous opportunities zone, this, this is a good opportunity and a good way to move forward. A question that I have, what is the process of involving or notifying the property owners that are involved? Is that done as a part of this process or is it essentially a part of the public hearing?
It's essentially a part of the public hearing. And it's been, my experience in dealing with this is that the property owners that are mostly impacted by this, they want this. Because this is an incentive for businesses. You don't, you know, you don't include residential development subdivision apartments because they're, they're not job creators. But I don't know one business that says I don't want it. In fact, we probably get a lot of businesses that areas that will be taken out are never in that will want to be in. And that's going to be probably the biggest challenge.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I would also like to point out that Roswell Inc. does a great deal of outreach on the community zone. And they contact the business centers on a regular basis, meet with them and also inform them of the benefits of using the opportunity zone as a business tool.
And that's correct. And Kimberly Albert is on the the Zoom also that she could chime in and add to that because I know that's one of their, Roswell Inc.'s primary focus is outreach and promoting the opportunity zone.
Alice, one thing we do, a specific way that we notify property owners, and this applies not just for property owners, but also for the businesses who are leasing the properties. So as soon as we get a list of the new businesses each month, we we verify their addresses with the addresses in the opportunity zone. And then if the business has more than one employee and it's a commercial business and it falls within the opportunity zone, we reach out and if they're interested, we set up a call and we explain the opportunity zone to them, which has been extremely beneficial for a lot of our businesses. You know, they don't necessarily know, especially if it's a one-off property that they're that they're in the opportunities that when they lease the property. We do have other, other property owners, specifically the office, the larger office complex, complexes like Kyle mentioned, the Roswell Summit Building on Holcomb Bridge Road, who use this as a recruiting effort when they are signing new leases. So we're continually working with them to help help their, their tenants know what, you know, what the benefit is. And the mayor was actually involved in a lunch and learn that we did at Roswell Summit last year to really inform these tenants of what we do at Roswell Inc. and specifically to let them know that they're in the opportunity zone and how it could benefit them.
Counselor Hall.
Thank you. And thank you, Kyle, Alice, and Roswell Inc. for your work in getting this done. I just have a couple of questions. Is this updated every ten years or is there a five-year update? If you could speak to the updates. And then also, is it tied to census tracts? Is that how they're identified? Or if you can explain that to me, I'd appreciate it.
Sure. So the state's requirement is ten years. You have to update these every ten years with your application. Technically, you can update your Urban Redevelopment Plan whenever you want within that period, but the maximum timeframe is ten years. The last one was done ten years ago, which I believe is the reason why the city is going through this process. Reapplying for an opportunity zone. Your second question, I'm sorry, I was so focused on answering that one.
It was, how does census tracts factor into this?
Sure. So block groups, not to get too technical on you, but block groups are subdivisions of census tracts. So census tracts are typically around five thousand people, I believe, and block groups are usually around a thousand people. And so within a census tract, you'll have a number of block groups. So they, so the state or Department of Community Affairs, actually, the first level of assessment is at the block group. And so if you look at the map that I am sharing, I don't know if you can see the map that I'm sharing anymore. Those lighter gray lines are the individual block groups that make up the City of Roswell. And now block groups also don't follow municipal boundaries. Census tract and block groups don't follow the city. So you can see in certain instances that the block group actually goes outside of Roswell, either in Alfreda or into Milton or so forth and so on. But effectively, that is the way, they use that, they use those boundaries because that's how the data is available. And so, for example, unemployment information is generally tracked by the United States Census at the census tract and block group level. And since the block group is smaller, it allows you to get to a more localized boundary. However, those don't define what an opportunity zone or urban redevelopment area has to do. That's the first step. Say, well, where are the areas that we should be focusing in on? The next step is to try and really drill it down to those properties that will be most affected and benefit from that designation. And that's the reason why you see here, we're focused exclusively on commercial commercial zone property within the City of Roswell, within those boundaries that we talked about. Hopefully that makes sense.
Thank you.
Any further questions or conversation for counsel? What are you looking for today, Alice?
What we need is approval to move it forward for the next step, which would be the public hearing on October the thirteenth.
Thank you.
Motion to approve and move it forward to the public hearing.
Second.
Proof by Councilor Tizer. Was that the second or Councilor Plomo?
It is.
Any further questions or discussion? In favor, please raise your hands. And it is unanimous. Thank you. Thanks, Kyle. We've got item number five, consideration to expand the twenty forty comprehensive plan scope of work to include a racial equity impact assessment element. Alice, Ms. Wakefield.
Jackie's going to share the presentation. It was at the July thirteenth council meeting, I think that was only maybe the second live meeting that we've had the year. That a concern was raised about the impact of the UDC amendments that were on the agenda that night. And there was an indication that there was a need for a racial equity impact assessment. At the time, Mayor Henry said that she wouldn't get with staff, and she did, and asked staff to look at how racial equity impact assessment could be used related to land use and zoning. A racial impact assessment is basically a systematic examination of how different racial and ethnic groups will likely be affected by a proposed action or a decision made by the governing body. Now, several cities, our research shows that several cities have these impact assessments, but their approach and their focus is all different. There are a number of steps that a city should take before performing this type of assessment. And the approach should be outlined, how you're going to do it, what you're going to focus on, with a plan and basically set forth a clear framework. And it's important to know that it's best to do an assessment during the decision process and not after the decision would have been made. That's why to do an assessment on the amendments on the third, on the, I guess it was July thirteenth, wouldn't have been feasible. And because through the development of the framework, the City of Roswell has the opportunity to determine the best approach. And that's important because I've said a lot of cities focus on different things. A lot of cities just focus on land use decisions and zoning. A lot of cities focus on the whole gamut of interest, I mean, capital projects. And a lot of cities have a lot of social service type of programs and they focus on that. So in working with staff, we looked at multiple components. And we felt that the best approach was to look at it in terms of short term and long term. The, and this is perfect timing, in our opinion, because we're going through the twenty forty comprehensive plan. And within the plan, there are various elements. And those elements kind of lay out policies related to development and to growth. And so during the short-term component, the city would look at those elements within the plan. And also within the plan's scope of work, there is a diagnostic of the UDC, which was talked about over the past few, few years, the need to do, we included that in the the UDC scope of work. And long-term, we'll be developing the actual racial equity impact assessment framework. From going a little bit detailed to both of, all of those components, the policy review components, as I said, there are various policies within the comp plan. And this will be an opportunity to refine those policies as they relate to racial equity and inclusion. And also to add new policies in the plan that are inclusive. The next component would be, as I mentioned, the UDC diagnostic component. One of the things that the consultant has been asked to do after we get through with the comp plan is to analyze the UDC and to identify where there may be conflict and issues with the UDC versus the comp plan. Because the UDC should be a tool to implement the comp plan. And doing that analysis, the city, the consultant would look at code language and regulations that may have an adverse impact on certain segments of the population. And what would be happening at this time would be recommendations for change. The proposal is not for to actually do a code amendment and change, but to make recommendations for change, point out those regulations and code language that may have some racial equity issue. And out of that, you would go to the more long-term component, which would be the racial equity impact assessment framework development. And that's a separate project. That is a project that involves basically a variety of residents in the, in the community from all different backgrounds. And they would work through and develop the framework and then bring that forward to the to the city. But what we're proposing is that are asking the committee to consider is expanding the scope of work for the first two components. We're already working on it. To, working on the comp plan to realize that there's additional costs, there's always costs of eighteen thousand dollars, but the good news is the funds are within the budget. We, the bid for the comprehensive plan came in much lower than was, was budget. And to hold off on the final component until after these two proposed components are completed. That's it. I don't leave anything else. I'll get.
So basically, what Alice was indicated is we would like to add components wanted to through the comp plan process. And we've spoken with our consultant about this. Obviously, in order to find out the scope of work and what it would cost. And since we are currently in this, we're getting organized for the second ring of the second round of public comment to be in November, this is the perfect time for us to hit this and get this added in so that it can be addressed through the public process. And then when we have the comp plan that comes to us next spring, these policies and everything else that could be added will be done during this timeframe. We felt this was the perfect time to add this in.
Thank you, Alice and Jackie. Counsel, I would like to add that this has been perfect timing. I've had offline conversations with the folks that I'm appointing to my racial equity advisory committee. They're very excited that before our first meeting, which is October fifth, we are already coming out of the gate with an initiative. As you know, this was brought up at a council meeting, as Alice stated. And we, I promised to look into it. And staff dove into it and luckily, we've got And staff um dove into it and luckily, we've got, like I said, it's a perfect situation. We've got the comp plan going on, we've got the budget within the comp plan that's available for the 18,000. And I would very much appreciate your support to move forward with that. And then with the second component, we'll have plenty of time to talk with, I'll have plenty of time to talk with my advisory committee on moving forward with that aspect. But I think that this first step is a very, very important step for us to take. Thank you.
Counselor Jerry.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, I completely agree. This is uh, I say, I believe long overdue. And um, I think that we are uh doing the right thing moving forward with the comp plan. Having spoken with many folks in the community um of regarding this, uh, they're very excited about us looking at our um zoning and uh our whole UDC and making sure we are doing the right thing moving forward. So uh, I'm very excited about this and appreciate you and staff uh coming up with this uh initiative and great timing um to coincide with the comp plan. So we can uh really take a hard look at this and make sure we're um doing what we need to do. Thank you.
Counselor Plomo.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer. So uh, I certainly support the uh, the framework being designed. So I think that's a great uh long term, long term addition and look forward to learning more about that. And what I want to, I guess what's not completely clear to me is help me understand the exact process of what this additional $18,000 request. Can you just help me understand exactly what is, what is the act, what are the actual action items, steps, and basically potential uh deliverable for this, for this $18,000? I guess that, that's, that's my first question that I'm not completely clear on.
Right. Basically, what you're adding is, is, is an additional element to the uh scope of work. It also will require additional work from uh, uh, I guess, the subs that were part of the uh, of this, the scope of work. For example, the person that probably would need the, the diagnostic of her, her time was not calculated for as much involvement as it would be in looking at codes to make sure that there's no impediments and those types of things. So it's just really the additional time that it would take to pull in some of the subs that uh, that uh would be needed.
Well, yeah, and that's, I guess that's the part I'm, I just want to make sure I'm completely clear on. Because I think overall, I think I, I, I believe I'm supportive of this, I just want to make sure I understand exactly what the deliverable is. So I understand it's increasing the scope, but I guess just help me understand what exactly is that scope? So the additional consultants or whatever it is, what exactly will they be, be looking at or, or, or basically delivering to the city?
What, what they're going to be delivering to the city is a comprehensive plan that includes uh, as well, uh, elements regarding racial equity. It's going to be looking at those types, looking at the, analyzing the policies within the uh, within the uh comp plan, looking at maybe do you need new policies? Having uh probably uh additional discussions with the, with the community about these policies. Uh, and also to, it's not that something's totally separate, it's going to be delivered. It's going to be all deliberate part of the comprehensive plan. It's just that there will be different, additional elements within the plan and diagnostic that would take place.
Okay, and that's, that's something that, that's something I support. Uh, one part of the, one part of the process, I think, just is important. From what I was told, and I don't know if this was led by staff or any elected officials or if it was the consultant, but what I had heard from residents is some of the questions that were asked during this comp plan um community engagement, which, which I think the more community engagement we can get, always the better. So, so love to hear there's potential for even more of that. From what I had heard was some of the questions were set up with a lot of bias and kind of just leaning towards kind of encouraging uh basically higher densities and, and, and basically not being generic neutral questions. And so what I, what I just want to make sure is going forward with, with these consultants and uh, and anything regarding the comp plan, et cetera, is that we can ensure it truly is neutral questions versus questions that are, that are kind of being led where obviously everybody's going to uh, going to say a yes or a no to or something along those lines. So what's, what's the process to make sure that that's not repeated? Is it something where council reviews ahead of time or, or what does that process look like?
Well, I, I mean, I don't know, but the thing is that we would never, well, and, and, and most processes, the processes that I've been involved in when you do a comprehensive plan, you don't, unfortunately, I'm sorry, you don't submit it to the elected officials and let the elected officials scrutinize the questions that are being asked. Because there are people, there are some people in this community that, that may or may not support, they support maybe a higher density. When you're doing a comp plan and you're looking toward the future, that's not a leading question. Do you support higher density, yes or no?
That's, that's, that's a neutral question. So that's what I'd like to, that's a great question you just asked. Do you support higher density, yes or no? Perfect question, no bias. But from what I was told, there was, there was a question where is, do you feel a fear of this leads to something? It was, it was convoluted, I didn't see the, the exact one, but I, I had a concern there. And another example, I guess, of a concern and something that Roswell has a lot of history of, is asking questions without getting clear, without having it be a clear outcome. And for example, this is not the comp plan, but let's look back to transportation. Transportation asks a question, you know, do you prefer the way this bridge looks or this way, bridge looks? And one of them looked much better, but one of them also costs, you know, millions of dollars more. Whereas in, because, because residents didn't have all the information, didn't know exactly what was being got, um, gotten, we end up having results that weren't, weren't as helpful. So my hope is that the questions are going to be not leading and also completely clear, you know, um, so that, that it's not up for subjectivity for us to wonder, oh, maybe they, the, the residents answered this way, maybe they answered that way. I just, I just think it's really important to have, have questions that are clear, to give really this council and the whole committee the right, the right guidance. So, so I, I do.
I don't recall, I'm sorry, I don't recall any leading questions. And I also believe, Jack, there is an, an area where you can just add your comments.
Right. So they do have different sections because the first round of public engagement, they had a, a survey. And then they just had comments related to the interactive map. So it could have been something on the map that had it. Um, but and we'll talk with the um consultant, since they're currently working on the second round of public engagement for um November and see how they're going to be doing that and making sure that things are not leading and they try to stay neutral as possible, but also to try to get the answers that we're looking for. Because we do want to talk about the next 20 years and the growth and everything. So you do need to have some sort of questions sometimes in order to get the answers that you're looking for or hope to get for. Uh, I do want to say, since we are talking about the comp plan, that the first round of comments, we had 674 surveys and 2,728 comments on the interactive map. That is more than we've ever had in the past, just to let you know. It's, it's good turnout.
That's great.
Counselor Wilson, you had your hand up. Did you have a common question?
Um, yes, I did. I just wanted to say, I think this is a very positive step. And I support the initiative um here to do the evaluation as a part of the comp plan. And um, I also had an opportunity to do some research on developing a long term racial equity framework. And uh, I do support that, definitely getting community input and putting together something that we, so that we all have a lens to look at decisions that we make uh moving forward. So appreciate this effort. Thank you, Mayor, and um, thank you, Alice and Jackie for bringing us forward.
Counselor Raul.
Thank you. Um, I'm also, I'm very excited to um see this, the, this move forward. I, I do have a couple of questions. Um, several cities that already have this, um, their approach and focus vary. They, I, what other focuses um outside of um just RUDC, uh, do these cities in incorporate this REI for? Uh, that, that's what I'd be curious. And, and what are some of the other approaches?
They, other cities, in addition to some land use, they look at how you um spend your funds, are your funds for like infrastructure improvement equitable throughout your community and your, and how the funds spend in, in communities of people of color and, and low income. They also look at uh public safety, um, uh, and, and look at the budget, the, the budget spending, kind of the, the whole, they can, someone can look at the whole operations of the city.
Thank you. So, so I understand that this is just the, the first phase. Um, and, and I guess as future phases, we could look at things like public safety, you know? Things like that. Okay. Thank you very much.
Counselor Wilson.
I just wanted to add to, you know, what Alice was saying, that, you know, looking at things like hiring practices and recreation opportunities, you know, art, access to arts and culture and things like that would be included in looking at a, at a complete, you know, comprehensive framework. So um, with that, if it's okay, I would like to uh, make a motion to approve and move forward.
Motion on the floor to approve. Is there a second?
Okay.
Thank you, my Councilor Retizer. Mayor Henry.
I would like to let you all know that uh we will be discussing in my advisory committee, our first topics of conversation, uh, deal with public safety. Um, Chief Conroy is going to speak to the group. Uh, we're going to look into that as an advisory committee. Also, we will be looking at housing practices and we hope that um Mrs. Wakefield will brace us with her presence and, and talk to us about that. We will also be requesting that the judge and solicitor have a conversation with us. And so all of this being said, what, as an advisory committee, our first probably five or six meetings are going to be informational meetings where we're diving into those issues. And my expectation is through those conversations, we will also know what else can be done because there's always room for improvement in every one of these areas. So um, what we want to do though first is to have a clear understanding what we are doing right, where we might be missing the mark, and then we can focus our conversations on that. So please know that all of those items um will be discussed by the advisory committee. And I, of course, will keep you up to date on the findings.
We have a motion on the floor to move forward. In a second, any further questions or comments? All in favor, please raise your hands. It is unanimous. Thank you. Thank you, Alice, Jackie. Moving on to transportation, item number six, consideration for the mayor and/or city administrator to sign an intergovernmental agreement with the Georgia Department of Transportation for a partnership on PI 0001757, the construction of express lanes along State Route 400. Mr. Ralph.
Thank you, Gary. Good morning, everyone. Can you all hear me? You share my screen with the slides. So the first item is the IGA with the GDOT. Uh, so the IGA with GDOT on Georgia 400 express lanes. So just to uh, uh, refresh our memory, so we, the, the city council approved a memorandum of understanding with GDOT in late 2019. And we are now today, uh, today's item is to formalize the contents of that uh MOU. Uh, so some of the main features, uh, some of the main contents of the IGA are the Holcomb Bridge Road and Georgia 400 interchange rebuild, accommodating the future Bus Rapid Transit Station, uh, the express lanes interchange uh, uh, south of Holcomb Bridge with the local access to get across. And then the bridge aesthetics for the Holcomb Bridge interchange, the future Holcomb Bridge interchange and the express lane interchange. And remember, on, on the side, we worked to uh match the same aesthetics to the Big Creek Parkway project as well, which is not necessarily uh, part of the topic today. Uh, so just, just to refresh, uh, you know, the bridge aesthetics we talked about, they were more than just aesthetics. We, we requested GDOT to add a pedestrian path going across the express lane bridge. That's, that's also included. And if you remember, we also uh included some, some stuff to uh enable other upgrades sometime in the future, uh, whenever the city wanted to. So the details of those bridge aesthetics that you approved uh late last year are included in your package. So I'm not going to go over those. And one last piece of the IGA is the future maintenance of all the aesthetics that we are including. The future maintenance is going to be on the city of Roswell, not on GDOT. So just to give you some background, you know, the Holcomb Bridge, Georgia 400, the interchange, the whole area, basically it is the most congested area in the city. And uh, some of the intersections in that area, they are amongst the highest crash locations in the city. And the city has been wanting to improve, uh, you know, that corridor, that area around the interchange for, for decades now. Uh, Holcomb Bridge Road, it carries about 70,000 vehicles a day. And Georgia 400 underneath Holcomb Bridge, that carries in this area about 190,000 vehicles every day. Those are all pre-COVID uh numbers. So the city's first major effort was the initiation of the Big Creek Parkway project over a decade ago. Uh, the Big Creek Parkway project eventually became a TESPOS funded project, a TESPOS that was voted by the public uh in November 2016. And that Big Creek Parkway project was explained to the public as a local connection with no ramps to Georgia 400. Uh, the TESPOS to vote, it also included uh some funds for the future of, of the, in, Holcomb Bridge interchange improvements as well. And uh, when GDOT came to talk to us uh, uh, about two and a half years, three years ago, about the express lane project, their initial suggestion was to attach the express lane ramps to the, to the Big Creek Parkway Bridge, to the future Big Creek Parkway Bridge. The city didn't support because of the promises and the way the project was explained to the, to the public. The city said no. City actually paused the Big Creek Parkway project for about three months, you know, just to negotiate with GDOT on the location of the express lane bridge and uh, the eventual location of the, of the transit, the future transit piece, which uh after conversations uh was planned to be included at the Holcomb Bridge uh interchange. Uh, and the GDOT's policy, you know, generally they don't uh attach express lane ramps to existing interchanges. Like they would not attach express lane access ramp to the, to the Holcomb Bridge interchange, uh, you know, due to safety and operational issues, you know, caused by mixing the general purpose tra, general purpose lanes traffic and the express lanes traffic and of course, the driver confusion that it may cause. Uh, another fact to keep in mind, you know, again, just to refresh our memory, that there would be physically not enough room uh to the north of Holcomb Bridge between the future Big Creek Parkway Bridge and the existing or future interchange at Holcomb Bridge. There would not be enough room to the north of it to put in uh another interchange which, which, which could be the express lane uh interchange. So the only other option left was to look to the south, and that's where the express lane bridges are proposed. So the express lane, uh, you know, the, the GDOT's project actually includes some uh improvements to adjacent intersections, but just to mitigate the impact of the additional traffic in the area. And some of those improvements, they've been shown on the graphics uh through the public meetings in the last couple of years. And uh, I just have a list of the areas that get improved. It's mostly just, you know, improving the existing two lane roads uh closer to the intersections as they are shown in the graphics by GDOT. And we also want to keep in mind that the express lane interchange is a partial access interchange. That means uh it's south facing only, so the express lanes traffic could go to the south towards Atlanta and come from the south to exit. There is no north facing uh ramps here. Uh, and of course, it didn't, on Roswell's request, GDOT included, you know, the local connection just for the local traffic, uh, you know, including pedestrians and bikes just to get across uh for sure, without, without paying any toll. Uh, and then, you know, the express lanes, you know, the GDOT operates them 24/7. Uh, but of course, most people, you know, use the express lanes uh during congested hours only. And um, in, 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 you know, general typical conditions, if the general purpose lanes on 400, they are flowing okay. The Holcomb Bridge interchange, that's, you know, functioning okay with no congestion. Uh, the, the, you know, the general public has no reason to access the express lane bridge to use the toll lanes. We expect very little additional traffic, you know, in the area of the Grimes Bridge Road and then the old Alabama Road on the other side during the off peak hours. And we expect that with the addition of two new bridges, you know, the Big Creek Parkway and the express lanes and the Holcomb Bridge interchange rebuild, our citizens can expect reduced congestion, improved safety and, and much better east-west connectivity. GDOT here, you know, they are responsible for all traffic analysis and their preference is, you know, they want to respond to all the public comments, you know, as part of their official NEPA process, just to make sure that they are providing one consistent message. And just so you know, you know, GDOT are, are partners at GDOT, they are on call today and they can, they can answer any questions if you, if you have. Quickly, you know, the next slide, you have seen this before. This was the east-west connectivity concept we came up with, you know, where a year ago. So on the left, you see 400 is shown, you know, vertically on this graphic. On the left, you see the existing situation where you see the river at the bottom and then the riverside road access that goes, currently goes underneath 400 and the congested interchange at Holcomb Bridge. So those are the two crossing options we have in the city. But then the future on the right side, the way it looks like is, you know, again, to the south, the riverside access stays. We see the new express lanes, partial access, that's a crossing opportunity here for vehicles, bicycles and pedestrians. Then you see the blue line, which is the rebuild of the Holcomb Bridge interchange, which would, which would functionally work a lot better than what we have today. And then to the north, we have the new Big Creek Parkway project. So that was kind of the concept behind the east-west connectivity. And again, just quickly, you know, this is the overview of the GDOT's project in this area. You see 400 going up and down here and all the, the yellow dots are the full or, or the interchange, interchange is basically the one at Grimes Bridge Road as it's shown here is a south facing interchange only. But the yellow dots are the interchanges, the green dots are inline merge in and merge out options for the traffic to get in and out of the express lanes from the general purpose lanes. And this again here, this is the same graphic we have seen before and that's what GDOT has shared at their public meetings. You see 400, you know, shown horizontally here. North is to the right of the screen. So you see the rebuild of the Holcomb Bridge interchange as a diverging diamond interchange. The nearby examples are 85 and Jimmy Carter and 85 and Pleasant Hill. So that's what it would become. And then to the left of the screen, you see the express lane bridge, the top left corner of the screen, you see Grimes Bridge Road coming in. So you see some improvements there on the turn lanes and stuff. And then a new traffic signal at Old Dogwood Road and Grimes Bridge. And then the express lane bridge with the south facing ramps. And then on the other side of 400, you see the lanes going, just improving the existing Rain Tree Drive and coming around and connecting to Market Boulevard with the roundabouts. So all these improvements of the express lanes and the connections, those are all paid for by GDOT as part of their project. And these are all the mitigations that they need. So this is the, you know, the, so it's just exactly two years ago, we started having these, you know, work sessions, committee meetings, council meetings, and all the red ones are the ones that are open public meeting. So all, these are all the meetings where, you know, related topics were discussed on the express lanes. And if you remember the Big Creek Parkway realignment, so it's, it's, it's all here. So these were all the opportunities, you know, for the public to maybe, you know, see what's going on, on, on this topic overall. Lots of opportunities in the last two years. So the payment obligations, so here, the express lane interchange along with the mitigation that I just shared with you, Roswell has no obligation, GDOT is paying for that. The Holcomb Bridge interchange reconstruction, so if you remember as part of the MOU, the agreement was Roswell was going to pay $15 million in seven, you know, equal yearly installments. That's like 15 million is like 40% of the total cost of the interchange rebuild. So that's the Roswell obligation. And then for the bridge aesthetics, you know, Holcomb Bridge Road and express lanes, Roswell's obligation, the number you saw late 2019 when we're talking about, when you finalized the bridge aesthetics, the number was 2.1 million. That is going up. About three months ago, GDOT, GDOT came to us and they wanted to add some soft costs, that's generally just the inflation and some contingency that they requested to add. Their initial ask was over a million dollars and, you know, some back and forth negotiations with them. They have came down to where the Roswell's cost would be about $420,000 more than the 2.1 million number you had seen in late 2019. GDOT is also paying towards about half of those soft costs for us. Those were part of the negotiations we've had at staff level in the last three months. But, you know, the way we are today is that Roswell's total obligations for the bridge aesthetics on both bridges would be 2.52 million dollars. That includes, of course, all the statics that we want and some of the, about half of the soft costs that GDOT is requesting us. The staff's opinion is that it's, it's, it's a reasonable request, you know, these are some costs, you know, that GDOT is going to incur. So that's what's included on the topic today. And so far, you know, GDOT is still requesting an upfront payment for the, for the bridge aesthetics, man. So this 2.52 million dollars. GDOT's expectation is for the city to pay this next year upfront, the whole amount. So, so staff, staff recommendation is to follow through with the vision we established, the city established as part of the MOU and sign this IGA. And again, you know, the financial impact is 15 million for the interchange rebuild, seven equal annual payments, and then the bridge aesthetics payment is 2.5, 2.52 million dollars, which is due upfront. And if you approve this today, we'll bring it to a future mayor and council meeting for a formal approval. So can I answer any questions on the topic?
Excellent. If you can share your screen, I can see the panel. The floor is open for questions.
If there aren't any questions, I'd like to make a motion to move it forward.
Motion to move forward by Councilmember Hall. Is there a second? Same by Councilmember Tizer. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor, please raise your hands. And it passes. Thank you. Moving on to item number seven, consideration to approve a contract modification with Gretchen Smith to include the Warsaw Road connection in the scope of work for the Big Creek Parkway Phase Two project. Mr. Ralph.
Thank you, Gary. So the next item is the Big Creek Parkway Phase Two contract modification. So just to, you know, give you a quick background, so the city council approved the realignment for the Big Creek Parkway Phase Two back in September 2019. And that approved alignment utilizes the existing old Holcomb Bridge Road versus a brand new road to the north. Add that, add that, as part of that approval, the request from the, from the city council that came in based on public input was to add the Warsaw Road connection to the Phase Two project. So here's how the graphic looks. So the, the blue line that you see going over 400 and then, you know, circling back along old Holcomb Bridge Road was the staff's recommendation for the Big Creek Parkway Phase Two. And then this green line that you see is what got added at the meeting based on public input. So the city council added that to the concept. So the topic for today is to add the, the design of this green line into our consultant's scope. This was not included initially and because it was not the staff recommendation. So that's the topic for today. And just a quick update, this yellow lines that you see, that's the intersection of Holcomb Bridge and Warsaw, this Big Creek Parkway Phase One. You should see that come into the committee in the next month or so for a construction contract. So again, the fee for our consultant Gretchen Smith and partners to add this design of Warsaw pieces, $243,750 and funds are available in the current contract and in the unused contingency. So we are not requesting any new funds. This is just allocation of funds within the, within the project fund to this addition. So if you approve this tonight, we'll bring it to a future mayor and council meeting.
Thanks, Mohammed. Councilmember Hall.
Thank you, Mohammed. I, I certainly support that connecting to Warsaw is a crucial detail. I guess just a question I have is if, if council all agreed on that literally a year ago, why is it just coming now? Why, wouldn't have been, why, why wasn't that kind of brought forward at an earlier time?
Oh, so we, we're not, we, we didn't delay anything. We didn't waste any time. It's just that we wanted to bring you an exact amount for what it's going to need to design it. And what we have done in the last year is the main project is still being worked on. You know, that's where all the complicated pieces are, the bridge and all that. So we've been working on that. We're just doing some survey in this area, kind of just verifying what, what work would it take? And now when, when our consultant felt comfortable, they can give us an exact cost to do the design. Now we are bringing, bringing it forward. The work on rest of the project has been working, has been worked on in the background and it's not causing any delay. We still hope to actually begin the design build procurement process fall of next year. So nothing is changing scheduling wise. We were just wanting to be sure to bring it just once for your approval.
Excellent. Thank you. And then out of curiosity, so with Phase One, when are you expecting orange barrels to be up for, for Phase One?
So I, I just say early spring because the construction contract is coming to committee in the next month or so. And then during the winter weather and just signing the contract and all that, realistically speaking, early, early spring of, of next year, 2021.
Okay, excellent. And so with that, unless this committee wants to discuss further, I motion to move this item to the October mayor and council meeting.
Motion to move forward by Councilmember Hall. Is there a second? Same by Councilmember Judy. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor, please raise your hands. And she has. Thank you. Moving on to item number eight, consideration of a blanket approval to perform right-of-way acquisition services and accept right-of-way options for the Willio Road or Willio Creek Bridge replacement project in an amount not to exceed $70,000. Mr. Ralph.
Thank you, Gary. So this is the Willio Bridge project. So we have been working on this project for a long time, but it's getting close now. So the project is to replace the existing bridge at Willio Road by the, over Willio Creek by the Cop County line. It's a joint effort between Cop County and city of Roswell. We are in a 50/50 partnership for design and construction. Design is almost done. Cop County is going to be the lead on construction and they are actually getting ready to start procurement in the next month or so. So this is how the bridge looks today. The, you know, it's, it's old and, you know, low sufficiency rating. You see the guardrails not in good shape, no pedestrian or bicycle accommodation here. So it's, that's why it needs to be replaced. And I mentioned all that. And, and of course, you know, if, if you are familiar with the area, there is, on the Cop County side, there's bicycle and pedestrian amenities on Lower Roswell Road. And in our city, we have the, the new Riverwalk Trail. It's just next to the bridge, but they're not connected because this bridge does not accommodate those modes of transportation. So the topic for today, again, the three parcels within the city limits that are impacted. So we need to acquire either right-of-way, permanent or temporary easement. And like I mentioned, the construction on this one could start spring, summer of 2021. Cop County is going to be the lead. And here's just the graphics of where we need, you know, some right-of-way or permanent or construction easement. So we are requesting a blanket approval, you know, on all right-of-way services. And then, you know, this blanket approval for the right-of-way, it's just so much more efficient than, I have a list of projects, you know, recent projects where we have very successfully, you know, acquired the right-of-way with your pool. And the amount, the total requested is $70,000 and that's again included in the, in the project cost. And I just quickly mentioned the total project cost is about $3 million and, you know, with the 50/50 split on design and construction, Roswell's total share that we have in the, in, in, in the budget is about a million and a half. And this 70,000 is included in that. So if you approve this tonight, we'll bring it to a future city council meeting.
Thanks, Mohammed. Councilmember Judy.
Sorry, motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Judy. Is there a second? Same by item number Wilson. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. And it is unanimous. Thank you. Moving on to item number nine, consideration to submit a loan application to the Georgia Transportation Infrastructure Bank for additional city road resurfacing. Mr. Ralph.
Thank you, Gary. So if you remember back in January of 2020, staff briefed you at a committee meeting, staff briefed you on the, on the resurfacing, you know, in, in the city of Roswell. Just a couple of highlights from that meeting were that we are behind the resurfacing. We need to start funding resurfacing at a, at a higher level. And it's, it's, it's important to the city council. It's important to the citizens. So the guidance staff got at that committee in January 2020, you know, we were going to request higher amounts in the yearly budget. And that wouldn't happen, you know, because of the COVID. But then we were also said that we were going to look for other opportunities. So one opportunity that came our way, and that's the topic for today, is there's a loan opportunity here offered to us. So we just want to get your consent if, if, if you want us to pursue that. So the Georgia Transportation Infrastructure Bank, you know, they are offering a loan program that's administered by the State Road and Tollway Authority. So we have, they, they just announced $10 million statewide, you know, a loan opportunity for whoever wanted that. We have some deadlines that we have need. So if, if you want to pursue, then we, we need to move forward right away. So our recommendation is to pursue up to $5 million loan amount. And given that they're offering $10 million statewide, it's, it's a stretch for us to expect $5 million, but we want to go for more. But we have the up to word in there. We, we just work with, you know, G-Tip and Serta to just be comfortable with the number and that's what we would apply for if, if you approve us to move forward tonight. And this would, of course, would be a big help for us to, you know, start catching up on the, on the resurfacing in the city. And even if you get this, you know, we would still want to have, you know, a higher yearly, you know, funding levels for the resurfacing to continue to get caught up and eventually, you know, maintain it at a certain level. So of course, there is, if, if, if we go for this one, there is going to be, you know, the yearly, you know, payments for that loan. And Ryan, Ryan Luckett, Director of Transportation, he's been involved. And he, he feels comfortable with that and he is on the call to answer any questions. So the, we're suggesting a loan term of 15 years and the interest rate offered is 1.22%. So staff's recommendation is to move forward with that. And if you approve this tonight, we'll, we'll bring it back to a future city council meeting for approval. Do you have any questions?
Councilmember Hall.
Yes, thank you, Mohammed. Thank you for bringing this forward. Couple of questions. So the state has a 10 million allotment and, and we're going to ask for 5 million. How, what is their criteria for picking and allocating, do you know? And then second, if we do receive a loan, does this impact our LMeg funds at all or our ability to get the LMeg?
Yeah. So again, the, the request Yeah, so again, the, the requested approval today is, you know, up to $5 million. So we'll work with, you know, with those entities and see what is a reasonable number to request, and that's what we request. And, you know, there's just criteria is just, you know, they'll just evaluate, you know, against all other requests that they're going to get. We can expect, we, we, we just have to see how, how they're going to, how they're going to see our request versus all the other requests. And I'm sorry, what was your next question?
Does this cause any use with LMeg or being eligible for those funds?
Yeah, no, no, it does not have any impact on the, on the LMeg. We'll just continue to receive the LMeg based on the roadway mileage we have in the city as long as we are matching the 30% with local funds, which is obviously going to be separate than this. This should not have any impact on LMeg.
Councilmember Tyser.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion approved by Councilmember Tyser, second by Councilmember Hall. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor, please raise your hands. And it's unanimous, thank you. Item number 10, consideration of trading in used asphalt equipment valued at $10,000, Mr. Ross.
So I'm going to have Rob Del Ros present the next three items.
Good morning, everyone. Next item, this is a formality that we honestly, we should have gotten approved through the budget process, but we'll explain this really quickly to you. During budget process, we were approved for $33,000 to purchase a new trailer to help us with patching and local smaller surfacing jobs around the city, typically for potholes. That amount took into account a trade in value for our old trailer. We're basically just asking for approval to receive a trade in value currently valued at $10,000 for our old equipment that we would be using towards the purchase of the new trailer. Staff was running into many problems with our previous equipment. And again, this approval would allow us to take that $10,000 and put it towards the new trailer per section 2720B of the purchasing ordinance were required to get this approval from you because it exceeds $5,000. Available for any questions you have.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilmember Hall, is there a second? Councilmember Judy? Any questions or discussion? All in favor, please raise your hands. And it's unanimous, thank you. Item number 11, discussion of funding for personal transportation, PTV, personal transportation vehicle, PTV, and related improvements. Mr. Del Ros.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer. This is a discussion item and a follow-up from a conversation we had with council approximately four months ago regarding PTVs. We were asked to look into the details of a, of a crowdfunding program and we're taking this opportunity just to update you on the status of the program because it's been a couple of years since we've given you an update. So very quickly, here is a map of our current registrations. So many of you are probably familiar, we ask for users of PTVs on local roads to actually obtain a license from the city to do that. The cost is a reasonable $15 for a five-year permit and the red dots you see on the screen are where we currently have registered users. You'll notice that there are, there are three clusters of users around the city, two of them focusing on our golf course communities up in Brookfield and over in Willow Springs, and the third being that area surrounding Canton Street. Recap of what the state law says and how our ordinance reflects it. So by state law and what our city ordinance matches, PTVs are allowed to operate on local roads that have a posted speed limit of 25 mile an hour or below. The, the crossing aspect of the PTVs, we are also allowed as a city to designate legal crossings for the PTVs to get from one side of the road to the other. So if the, I'll show you a map here in a second that makes a little bit more sense to this. But if there, if there was an example where we had a 30 mile an hour road separating two 25 mile an hour communities, one, one on one side, one on the other, we are allowed to designate a crossing for one community to get to the other. Let me show you this map here. You'll notice on this map, the red lines, think about the red lines as barriers. The red lines are 30 mile an hour and above speed limits. And the shaded colors are where we have 25 mile an hour communities where they can't connect to each other. So the red and the green, the purple, the yellow, those are kind of islands of 25 mile an hour PTVs that cannot have any way to get from one island to another. Those red barriers and then just natural topography are, are, are preventing communities from linking to each other. And to refresh your memory, one of the reasons why we were so happy to include a PTV crossing in the intersection at North Coleman is by bringing that crossing online, you were connecting that large blue area around Land of Lakes to Canton Street, which is an amazing opportunity. And we, the, the purpose of this program that I'm about to talk to you about is to find more opportunities like that to link communities to each other and to link communities to key destinations like Canton Street and to the parks. This policy, as we've talked about it for the past couple of months, and the reason why it didn't come to you earlier, this policy has the potential to get very complicated. It's very subject based on the requests. And what we're going to be asking for you this morning is, is for us to provide some information to communities online. But it's going to be very difficult for us to create a formal policy for this, similar to our traffic calming policy or similar to our residential traffic control policy, just because by the nature of these crossing and these requests, some of them are going to be very easy. Some of them are literally going to be signing and striping and some concrete on the ground. Some of them are going to be very complicated. Some of them are going to be involving potentially right of way from an HOA or easement from a single family home or utility relocation or interaction with GDOT and the state routes. So given that this is a relatively new program and given that we don't think we're going to be receiving an avalanche of these requests immediately after this committee, what we'd like to do is just talk through with you some of the details that we're going to be looking in. But then when we get an actual crest from an HOA, we would bring that to a committee. We would bring a recommendation to quantify how much city involvement we recommend and we would go from there. I'm not going to hit all these bullets, these are in your packets. We're going to be looking at feasible connections. We're wanting to make sure that, that where the request is being made from an HOA does have a logical start point and has a logical endpoint and doesn't just end in, in the middle of a grassy area with a single family home. We want clear, clear start and endpoints. We're going to be looking into making sure we can quantify the scope of the request because I think it's very likely that there's going to be a cost partnership here. We want to make sure we're, we're sharing information with the HOAs to make sure that they understand and they have some skin in the game. Is this a, is this a $2,000 item or is this a $20,000 item? We want to make sure we're having conversations about right of way. We want to make sure we're having conversations about impacts to landscaping or impacts of fences or, or the, the impacts basically of that wide multi-use trail on a single family home property. We're going to be having conversations with residents as, as groups because not every community has a mobilized HOA. Sometimes the HOAs aren't required. There is a, a hodgepodge around the city and we're just basically going to be handling these again, based on the requests with the, with the residents that, that so happened to bring that request to us. I think it's reasonable for us to, when we start having these conversations and we bring these committee items to you in the future, we are going to want to understand what skin in the game and what acknowledgement from the requesters that they do have some level of funding that they would be able to either partner with the city to do or potentially cover 100% based on the details and based on where the, the discussion goes at that time. I'm skipping a lot of these because these are, these are important points that we need to talk about in the future, but again, because we're not recommending to necessarily establish a policy, we don't necessarily need answers to all of these statements at some time. If we, if the city is receiving funds, we're going to make sure we obviously are speaking with the HOA. We want to make sure that we're not opening ourselves up to any potential disagreement on how the HOA collected that money from the residents. If they give us the funding, we are under the assumption that they're speaking for the community. We're going to want to have detailed discussions about what this scope entails as far as is the, is the city staff surveying the land, is the city staff designing the project? Is it even our quest that we really need in engineering set of plans or, or is it literally just a set of, of signs and traffic striping and concrete? It's going to be on a case-by-case basis. Here is a quick picture of kind of what we're talking about. This is Harns Scrabble Road. This is one of our legal crossings that we've already approved in the city. If you're familiar with our residential areas on the left side of the screen are able to use that crossing in order to access the trail that you have already deemed is a PTV accessible on the right side of the street and it runs east and west. And that is an overhead picture of, of basically what is happening. Staff recommendation, we wanted to have this conversation with you this morning to see where you are on this, to determine what kind of priority this is to you. We would like, if the pleasure of the council, to summarize what we've talked about this morning and put this information on the website to start having that conversation with HOAs if this is something they're interested in. Based on our conversation with the finance director and some relevant past projects where we have received funds from private individuals and built things in the city right of way, either median islands or rapid, or flashing beacons, our understanding is that we don't need any city code changes to do this. We are simply expanding our toolbox and able to entertain these type of requests and receive funds to make enhancements to our right of way. That concludes my presentation and I'm open for questions.
Councilwoman Plomo.
Thank you. So Mr. Del Ros, a great presentation and actually want to commend RDOT. I think this is something that is unique. It's thinking outside the box and, and it's, it's creative and just, I think, I think a great opportunity. I think I, I will support staff's recommendation to not force or push a, a formal policy. But what I would like to see as a formal policy is just that, that staff does have the, the interest and then there is, and there is the goal of making it easier for more communities to become connected this way. So I think that, I want to make sure that is an important goal of just looking for solutions, trying to work. I do have two things then there that, or I guess one and a half things in there that gave me a little concern, is you mentioned 10 feet. And so I do remember staff's recommendation and staff's request that instead of just saying eight feet everywhere, we said multi-use path, which is, which staff requested we consider 10 feet, knowing it can be eight. I definitely want to make sure that this, this policy would be allowing an opportunity for eight. I would not want, I would not want it going to requiring 10 and that being a big hindrance, big expense, they, you know, other complications. So that's, that's important to me. Also, what I consider a very related item, just as I had mentioned, I don't think it was right for, for developers or, or homeowners building new house, whatever it might be, to have to rip up a perfectly good five or six foot sidewalk just to then put in an eight foot sidewalk. I, I, I still stand by that for, for homeowners and developers. I feel the same way certainly with this situation. If, if we have a situation where there's an existing six foot, instead of needing them to rip up a six foot and put in an eight foot, I think, I think there are ways and ability, and there should be an opportunity for them to just put a two foot sidewalk connecting it, just as I've seen with some different locations. So those are really my, my two comments. But again, I think this is a, a creative, a creative job you, you all have done. And I think it's a good opportunity to try to encourage and incentivize just more, more connections and doing it in a fiscally responsible manner. So, so I, I like seeing this direction. I'd like to look for more of these. I'd look to look for more ways the city can help, but I think this is definitely a step in the right direction and, and kudos to you and the team, Mr. Del Ros.
Thank you. Two responses, if I can do this quickly. First response to the 10 foot versus eight foot width issue. We would approach these conversations with the public on these crossings in the exact same way we handle sidewalks for developments in the UDC. So 10 foot is our default, but we are willing to narrow to eight based on a case-by-case basis for hardships, either based on a topography hardship that may result in a wall or impacts to a fence, impacts to a utility pole. We are willing to have those minor tweaks to the width, understanding that we would not, especially with PTVs potentially being a user of the facility, we would never go below eight. 10 foot would be our default. We would narrow down to eight for pinch points. Second question regarding sidewalk widening, we've been spending a lot of time on this issue and we are planning to bring this to a committee discussion next month, just based on the conversations that we've been having with all of you the past couple of months as we've been kind of rotating around this topic. We're going to be giving you our clear recommendation along with some information on how our neighboring municipalities have been handling this issue. Show you some graphics and find out where you want us to go specifically regarding that issue so we can, we can follow your guidance.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hall.
Thank you. Thank you, Rob. It's exciting to see this coming to fruition. I would just like it to be clear that when you put the information on the website, that this is a more or less adoptive PTV or P, yeah, PTV crossing where it's privately funded and not necessarily being funded by all the taxpayers of the city.
We can make that clear on our website. I do think we, I'm pretty confident we already have a PTV presence on our website. We'll likely be expanding that with this additional material, providing some of those details that I hit the presentation along with, implying that it is a, it is a crowdfunding mechanism. It is not something that the city is going to be proposing to any of these crossings before. And I do think we'll be using some social media to announce the, the, the opportunity.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Plomo.
Thank you. I actually have a question. I don't know if this question is for you, Mr. Del Ros, or I don't know if this question's for Mr. Holsy. And by no means am I, you know, have I formed a, formed an opinion, I'm more just asking a question. Just knowing, you know, the potential of, of private sponsorship and things like that, I know around Roswell, we have some, some signs saying, you know, this, this street has been, been cleaned by, and it could be a company name, it could be a family name, whatever. Could there be the possibility of, of, you know, if this, if this is done, you know, kind of having a little sponsorship thing? And hypothetically, let's, I know the one that's connecting the large neighborhood to Canton Street, which, which I certainly supported, that's being paid for by, by taxpayers. And, and so love Councilmember Hall bringing up, you know, the focus of private sponsorship, et cetera. Let's say tack, let's say this council did not vote for taxpayers to provide that connection and hypothetically, just let's pick a, pick a, pick a place, you know, I'm blanking on a, let's say NOKA. So if NOKA was the one that said, you know what, I really want all these golf carts to be able to cross over, enjoy all of Canton Street, could there be the opportunity to put a little sign, you know, just like we have those, those small, I feel tasteful ones saying they clean the road? Could it just say, you know, you know, sponsored by, by a little NOKA thing? Or maybe it was the, the Marie Wilsie family or whatever it might be?
So Councilmember Plomo, I'll, I'll find out what Mr. Holsy has to say from a legal perspective, but from staff perspective, we have no problem with that on our city roads. I do think that would be a much more difficult conversation if we were talking about that on state routes.
Sure, yeah. Just something, something to consider again, I, I, I think it's just worth discussion, discussing. And again, incentivizing and showing appreciation for, for those choosing to.
Instead of having adopt a street, it's adopt a crossing.
Right.
There wouldn't be any problem with that.
I'd like to motion that this go forward.
Second.
Robert, are you looking for a motion or is this a discussion?
This was discussion, but based on the motion and based on the head nods that I see on the screen, this is something we'll be moving forward with for social media outreach and further website enhancements.
Okay, totally, we need a bonus as long as everybody has the same consensus. Good enough. Anybody have any further comments or questions? Thanks, Rob. Moving on, number 12, consideration of initiation of the text amendment to section 114 Streets of the Unified Development Code to add two street types. Mr. Del Ros.
So I mistakenly shared my screen.
Thanks, Rob. Moving on, number 12, consideration of initiation of the text amendment to section 114 Streets of the Unified Development Code to add two street types. Mr. Del Ross.
So I mistakenly shared my screen there. My apologies. Uh, item number 12, uh, staff is requesting a deferral on this one. Uh, the reason why it was placed on this agenda is because it was specifically deferred to this meeting. Uh, we simply need need more time to develop our recommendation for this item. So we're asking for a deferral.
I want you to defer.
I don't think we, we don't need a motion on this. We're, we're just going to pull it and defer it. So we're, we're good to go on that.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rob. Moving on to other items, item number 14, discussion regarding an ordinance to allow the use of yurts. Councilmember Judy.
Uh, thank you, Gary. Um, I will actually pull this this after today. Um, I I've been speaking with legal and com dev uh regarding this. Um, and this will be a, this is a, I guess, an initiative to help uh business owners, uh specifically restaurants during the winter um with their decreased seating capacity with the possibility of putting yurts um out uh in front of their restaurants to increase seating capacity. This has been done in um a few cities around the country. Uh, I think it's a really cool um option. Um, there's just some things we've got to work through uh with uh looking at regulations of of size and 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 within and to get it to work within our code. So it's uh not ready for discussion today. Um, that's the reason I didn't send anything out to everybody, but I'm pretty excited about uh trying to figure out how we can get this to uh to the business owners um as quickly as possible uh so we can um look at this for this winter um to help increase uh seating capacity. So um, I'm sorry, this is not ready for today, but uh I will, I will get something else soon.
And if it's, if it's all right, uh, I'd like to just make a comment about it.
Sure. Or a closing.
Excellent. So Councilman Judy, I I definitely understand it's not ready for today, but nonetheless, I I do want to say I appreciate you bringing it forward and and thinking about that. I think, I think overall, I think it's it's a good idea. Some things I encourage you as you, as you kind of think about how you'll, you'll kind of bring it back next month. Um, something, something to think about it. I do know that the HPC has had comments about tents in the historic district and the look and things like that. So I encourage you to potentially get with Julie Martin or or HPC just for for some feedback on how we can kind of best design it. And then as well, the potential of when it borders residential, is there any potential uh concerns or risks? So just some considerations, but again, I I think it's a great initiative and appreciate you uh bringing it forward and looking forward to to next meeting.
Yeah, those are uh both things that I've been speaking about. I've, I've reached out to HPC, so um I will keep you all informed on this.
Excellent. Thank you.
No further questions or comments from the council. We might move on to item number 15. Consideration of Ted's amendments to section 4.2 District Components, 5.2 District Components and 6.2 District Components of Unified Development Code to add default zoning conditions. Councilman Plerom.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Palmer. And so with that, what we have here and the one I want to focus on, and I want to make sure I'm not going out of order, I'm looking at package page 212. Is that, is that, uh, is that right, Mr., or is it the, is that right, Mr. Palmer?
Yeah, I was going to pack it up.
Okay. No, no, no problem. Just.
The one on occupancy.
I'm sorry?
I said that's the one on occupancy.
Yes, perfect. Thank you.
Yes, that's 212.
Yeah, perfect. Thank you, Councilmember Willsy. So this is, this is one I I definitely uh definitely think is very important, very important for our, for our residents. Very important for uh for residents in a, in a couple of different ways. Uh, one reason this is an important initiative I want to discuss is because uh we have, we have had situations in in Roswell where eh an application comes forward, a developer gives a, gives a presentation and and some residents end up, you know, uh, getting it potentially excited for one thing or even just expecting one thing because they see a possibility of of really a mixed use development, for example. And then what ends up getting built is just the residential without the uh, the the mixed part, without that commercial part. So this is, this is uh, this, this helps from that standpoint. So what it, what it does is it improves transparency to residents. So what they're, what they're going to see proposed ends up being what is actually uh, what actually ends up getting built. And and it also creates just really uh, in addition to that transparency, more walkability, more potential for destinations, et cetera. This is something where uh there's always the ability to change it. So and there's always the ability for for the applicant to request, you know, kind of changes to the policy, whatever it might be or or other flexibility, as well as if they've came forward and they want this apartment building and this retail and they decide later on they no longer want that retail, they always can come back for a site plan uh change, which which is a, which is something that goes through the public process. And and also I I feel is is the way that that uh that residents should expect, instead of just no need for any public discussion or public process. But ultimately, by not building a portion of what they said was going to be built in the, the way it was, that is, that is really a site plan change. It's just a site plan change that didn't require anything. Because obviously, if they, if somebody comes forward requesting one building and they decide they want to build two buildings, that would be a site, site plan change and residents would get to see the council uh meeting where they're requesting that second building. But instead, if they've promised the community two buildings, only end up building one, then that's a site plan change as well. It doesn't require that public process. And again, it is a situation that we've, we've certainly seen. And so I also bring up that this is something with with examples for where this was done. This is something that actually uh half of this council that supported the uh, the project on Old Alabama, a condition like this was added in there. And again, I think that should be the default that could always be removed, but I do not, I I think the default should not be that there isn't that condition. I feel that the default is, should be this condition. And another example of where this came into play in addition to Old Alabama in Roswell is actually Vickers. I'm sorry, not Vickers, um Avalon in uh in Alpharetta. So uh, so, because obviously with Vickers, all the mixed use was built, but it was because it was all single, you know, the single building and all that. Whereas in um, obviously in Avalon, there was different types of properties and they did end up getting a, having a condition that included a CO. So um, so again, what this is really saying is if we have a mixed, if we have a, if somebody, if a developer's proposing mixed use where there's going to be, there's going to be residential and there's going to be non-residential, then this is just basically saying that they cannot get the certificate of occupancy on the residential until they've built the other buildings that they've, that they've told the city and they've told the residents that they're going to build. So uh, so that's, that's the purpose of this. And and with that, would love to open it up for any questions that anyone, uh, that anyone has.
Councilwoman Tizer.
You're, you're a mute Councilman Tizer.
Stop the video instead of starting the voice. Thank you. Um, I fundamentally agree with the concept here of what we're trying to do. Uh, but I fundamentally disagree with the methodology. And so I'd like to spend some time uh potentially uh one-on-one with you, talking through uh some of the issues to see if there is a way to do this. So uh, here, here are a couple of problems that I, that I see with it. First of all, uh, when a project like this starts, usually the um, the commercial and the residential are done by separate companies, separate organizations. Those organizations are separate, funded both by debt and equity by separate entities. It is highly unlikely that one entity would subordinate to the other. And it is extremely unlikely that their banks would subordinate to the other. And so it, it, it doesn't quite get to where I think you're trying to go. Here's the other problem. Uh, let's say that this did happen this way. Let's use the development up on Highway nine as the example. Because it doesn't appear that at this point, the commercial has been built. So you would have a whole series of buildings empty, rotting to the ground, unused. Because for whatever reason, the second developer, the second person couldn't build that property. Perhaps there was a pandemic and uh they were unable to complete the project potentially for a year or two. So there might be a delay. And so those residential units would sit empty uh and and become, you know, problems and eyesores and nuisances. So uh, there are ways possibly to do this. Uh, there are cities who do this slightly differently, um, using, using different methods of building permits, uh, which, which I think might be a better answer to solving, to solving the problem. And again, I agree that this is something we need to figure out how to handle. But withholding the CO creates a number of problems and really doesn't, I think, solve uh the problem that you're trying to solve. So uh respectfully, I'd like to see uh just a little bit more time spent on this before it finds itself on a council meeting and and we create worse problems than we already have. Thank you.
Councilwoman Judy.
Um, I agree. I I've reached out to a couple of folks in Alpharetta. I, I think this is a great um great idea. Um, and I think we need to work through it. Um, Alpharetta, it's not as easy as just saying they withhold the CO. There's, there's a lot of different elements that go into that. It's my understanding. So I would like to kind of uh figure out what they do and what some surrounding cities do that uh still encourage the development to be built, but safeguard that um to, to do what we're trying to figure out here. Um, rather than uh, I think this just needs a little more work. Um, and uh, I would love to uh go down this road with uh whoever would like to figure this out. But uh, I think if we look at some surrounding cities that do have this in their code and look at the nuances of it, um, maybe we can craft something that works for Roswell.
Councilwoman Hall.
Thank you. Um, I, I do support this initiative in whatever form it takes. I think it's very important. And um, as we've all, as we've all discussed, the importance of getting our commercial um developed. Uh, I do know from a lending perspective then that when developers enter into these types of things, that the lending institutions, they do subordinate. They do work out together. So from a uh lender perspective, those things are, they've been doing this stuff for years and uh that's how it happens in the other cities. So I encourage, um, I hope we all work together and get something like this passed.
Councilwoman Willsy.
I, yes, I, I also support the concept. I, you know, I do think we need to keep in mind that with any mixed use development, there's, there's a lot of moving parts. Um, and would suggest uh talking to some investors. I've talked to several about this as well, as well as lenders and kind of figure out exactly how we can write something so that we get the, the result that we're after without some causing any unintended consequences.
Councilwoman Plerom.
Excellent. So uh, I think, I think uh what I really liked to see and liked what I heard was, I think we all do like the same end goal. And it sounds like there might be some different ways to get, to get there. And I'm, I'm actually, I'm supportive of that, so I'm not going to be pushing for a vote. I, I do have something that I'd like to get consensus on and we can certainly ask Mr. Palmer, Mr. Holsey if if that would require a vote or not. And I'm flexible either way. Uh, two things I do want to address with with the scenario and the way it was presented um is I do feel i- in good to know from Councilmember Hall about how, how it can work with the, the lenders and the, and the different developers. But also the fact that we typically see a certain portion is sold off to another developer and all that. It does create this skin in the game in that actually uh, you know, them creating some type of requirements or agreement where something will be built. And with the example um, that, that Councilman Tizer gave, you know, with, with Highway nine, well, what if it's, if it's not built? And then we just have these buildings turning into an eyesore and not, not having their CO. Couple of different things. One, we do have a number of code enforcement rules saying that things cannot, something cannot turn into an eyesore or there are ways to, to address. But also, at any point in time, a developer does want to change and they say, you know what? We don't want to build this second building that we promised to everyone. They always can come back through a public process and just say, look, because of this, because of that, we don't want to build the second one and we still want those CEOs. So that's, that's something that would always be possible with this approach. But here's, here's what I'd like to do. So I don't want to push for a vote today. What I would like to do is use the next month where I, I would like to meet uh one-on-one with a call with, with anybody interested. Your thoughts, suggestions, et cetera. And at the same time, I would like to meet with staff to just get some, some, any, any different ideas or things that they've seen with other cities. So that's, that's what I'm proposing. So I guess I'll, I'll ask if any council members have any concerns with that approach, knowing that I would just bring it back next month after I discuss with staff and after I discuss with any council members interested. So for, before I, before I ask a question to Mr. Palmer, council, any, any concerns with that approach? Okay. And so, Mr. Palmer, I, I just shared what my intent is. Is that something?
Plerom, the mayor had a comment on that.
Go ahead, Mayor Henry.
My preference would be that you leave it at a staff level for them to work out. I think that they know your intention. Um, I think that they know our intention and it's an easy one for them to work out and get to where they need to be and they can bring it back to committee.
Well, I guess, I guess my concern is my goal, I think this is an important initiative where it, I do think it's important we're moving forward and I do want us to be ready to vote next, next committee. And and my concern is if staff, staff, they might end up presenting a way, they'll, they might know my intent. They might, might, we might have some different views on a tent, et cetera. And we might end up being, having another discussion like this. Whereas in if, if, if I ask, if I ask staff to kind of be looking and providing, and actually either way, I'm fine. If staff wants to just go ahead and and provide some different ideas, that's fine. But I'd like to be meeting with council ahead of time as well, because I want us to be prepared to move this forward next committee.
Uh, one of, one of the questions I've got on uh how we're going to work out some of this stuff with the staff, and I guess, I guess we need consensus by the council. There's something that you want the staff spending time working on because it sounds like it's going to be a lot of work. So I guess that would be my question. If the, if the council wants us to work on this, um, I need some direction.
Right. And that, and that, and that makes sense. Again, I think, I think this is a way to achieve it. I'm also open to hearing what Councilman Tizer, Councilman Judy, Councilmember Willsie, Councilmember Hall, Mayor Henry, anybody else has to say any other suggestions. And I'm also open to hearing um staff if, if they are. I, I personally would not want them to spend too much time on it. If there's any just easy examples where anybody in staff knows, oh yeah, this city has something like that, this other city has something like that. And that could be quick. I'd love to see it. If not, I think it's something where, you know, just this, this council can come up with it.
Councilwoman Willsy.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would just like to say, I think staff is probably in the best position to do the research and make the recommendations. I mean, they um, that, that's basically their life's work. Um, and I, I think that, you know, if we individually need to get with them and discuss um between now and the time that it comes back, I think that's a, a great approach. But um, I, I, thank you for bringing the initiative forward, but I do think at this point that it's something that we can ask staff for their recommendations on.
And so, and with, with that, I'll just, I'll plan on bringing it next, uh, back next month. And and Mr. Palmer definitely would uh, would, would appreciate any, any staff recommendations that uh, that staff could be prepared with next month as well.
Okay. So what we can do is we'll, we'll, we'll take a look at it, do an analysis and provide some input at the next committee meeting. Sound good enough?
Sounds good.
Okay. Plerom, I'd still like to have that discussion if possible.
Absolutely. So I, I, just as I said from my beginning, I'll have that same, I have that same intent. I look at hearing from uh, from staff and I look forward to having a one-on-one conversation with anybody that would like to because I really do want to see this move forward next committee, because I think this is an important uh thing for the future of, of Roswell's development.
Okay. No further questions or comments. We'll move on. Item number 16, discussion review letter B under section 13.8.7. How is a land disturbance permit reviewed from insurance? All approvals are aligned with the site plan. Councilwoman Plerom.
Thank you. So uh, so for this one, it, what, what brought this, what brought this about? And this is a chance for just public discussion with uh, with staff and uh, and Mr. Holsey as necessary. But basically, if this council can think to every, basically every single uh zoning application we've ever had, the, the com dev liaison or or whoever makes that motion, if it doesn't end up being com dev liaison adds in a staff recommended um, a staff recommended condition, which is that this approval is based on, on the site plan. And that, and so I, and that's great. I, I really appreciate staff giving us that recommendation. I think that absolutely should be a continued recommendation because it's just making it front and center clear to council and clear to the applicant and clear to residents. So, so great process. So, so great process, and I want to see that process continue. What I wanted to make sure was there, there have been situations where there have been a number of different conditions and, and some needing to be, to be edited for compromises or whatever it might be. In which case, what I wanted to do is I wanted to just mitigate the risk of what happens if we ever left off that condition. Would that mean that actually the applicant does not have to be tied to the site plan? And that's where the legal department, as well as, as well as a com dev staff kind of walk through. It's actually already in there. And so even if there was, there was a zoning approved and it did not have that condition, it would still be tied to the most recent site plan. And that's where I just want to turn it over to, to staff to see anything that I'm missing and really to confirm what I'm, what I'm saying right here to, to make sure that, that that's accurate.
Any questions or comments from the council?
Ms. Dibel, you might have comments after. Ms. Dibel, could you just, could you just confirm or, or say something that I might have, if it was anything I misstated?
So right now in our code, under our 1387, letter B indicates that if the application and site plan are not in substantial accordance with the previously approved site plan, then it's subject to review and approval by the mayor and council. So when we get a site plan that comes in, that's been through a rezoning or a conditional use, not one that went straight to design review board or HPC, obviously since they didn't go to council. But, and if they're not in accordance with that previously approved site plan that went through the process, then based on items one through 13 that are listed before that section, we inform the applicant that they have to go back to council. Now it's straight to council, does not go back through the four-month process. So we do have that in there and it's currently in the code now. So I'm not sure if legal has anything different, if you don't include that. But we include the site plan because we have a stamped date. So during the process, a site plan's submitted, because it's required to be submitted at the applicant, with the application. But they can also revise the plan. But we stamp those and tie it to that stamped date. So we know which one that's been effectively approved by the mayor and council. But that's why that condition's in there, just so you know.
And, and again, I, I love the condition. I think, I think it's great that you do this. I want to see that continue to happen. But just to be clear, if there's ever a rezoning, a conditional use or a variance, and for whatever reason, that condition was not, was not spelled out in the motion, and then, and then a developer brought forward a different site plan that they wanted to, to build to, you, it's my understanding, staff would just look to that section of the code that you just addressed. Is that, is that accurate, Ms. Dibel?
That's accurate. If you want, you want Bob to answer that as well, that's accurate and, and what we understand.
Mr. Holsy, is that, is that, is my understanding accurate?
I don't see the necessary or the necessity of it, but I don't see any harm in it.
Right. But so basically, I, I'm not, I'm not asking for any changes to the, to the code or anything like that. This is more of a discussion item to make sure that my understanding was correct, that, that if the condition, if that condition was ever missed, it's still covered here by, by the code.
Yes, it is.
Excellent. That, that was it, unless council has any questions or, or comments.
Okay. No further questions or comments from the council. Councilwoman Willsy.
I just, I think what would, what I would just have some questions and would need to be defined is, you know, to what level of review is council going to have if it, if it does come back? I mean, is it just a pass fail based on the recommendations? Or is it opening up the site plan again, another project for discussion? Mr. Holsy, I mean, any, does that need to be defined a little more clearly?
No. When it comes back, council reviews it just like it would any site plan.
So basically, you're opening it up for a, a wholesale review again?
Correct. If that changes the plan, they understand that it requires council approval and then you get to talk about everything.
Right. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. Moving on, number 17. Consideration of text amendment to section 9.6.5, the industrial repair letter B, car wash to the UDC. Councilmember Zepot is not here, so my recommendation is we can defer this to the next committee meeting. That's okay with the council? Most of them defer by the mayor, second by Councilmember Judy. All in favor, please raise your hands. Thank you. It's unanimous and we are adjourned. Have a good day.